Welcome to the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting of the Lyman Select Board. This meeting is a public proceeding and is being recorded. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Where to go?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was funny to me heavily. Alrighty, we have a public input, public attendance will have up to five minutes to address the board. Please use the podium to address the board and please be respectful of others. Board may not be able to respond to questions and answers during public comment. If you wish to be placed on a future agenda, please contact the town manager. Is there anyone who would like to have their five minutes at the podium? I don't see anybody that wants to, so we'll move on to the mail. We have the York County Sheriff's report. Is there any questions or comments on that?
No.
Item three, unfinished business.
Tony Vog sent an email, big U, sorry, sent an email today. A bunch of attachments I didn't get to, but it's basically, I know Lindsay saw it. Basically, they're still working on it. Him and Brad are really not getting into discussions yet because they're waiting for the nonprofit MCMA attorney to work on the model states MCA franchise agreement. So, still on hold. There was a long way to say, no, no updates.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, we'll move along to Department of Committee reports. We have the Fire Chief review and approve EMS billing fee schedule. And I believe Lindsay just gave us a copy of the current schedule to go with the updated one. The Fire Commission reviewed this while our last meeting last Thursday. And we're moving it forward to, for your approval.
So while folks are reading, I'll make a motion to accept the updated fees.
Second. Yours there.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I didn't see you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's unanimous. Thank you. We have the expense report from the Treasurer. Re-review. We've got lots of reports. We have the Parks and Rec report, the Town Manager report, Town Clerk report, and the EcoMaine report. Is there any comments or discussion on that?
Yeah, any comments, questions on the Town Manager report?
I thought that was a
Yeah, thank you.
It was very, a good report and it was very clear. I don't have any questions.
No.
I will say, when I got out of my truck here tonight, could you please thank our Facilities Director?
Yeah.
Because it's nice out there to be able to see.
Yeah.
Yes.
Matt, just a couple of questions about the report. Let me see, has the Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission audit the zoning ordinance begun?
Yep, so that began, I think they kicked off in September. So they're just kind of, basically they got some grant funding and they reached out to local municipalities, ours being one of them, to say, hey, we have this grant funding if you want to do your ordinance on it. They really just look for inconsistencies. But it would be great as, you know, down the road, we're going to get to ordinance revision, hopefully.
Right, okay. And let me see, could we get a copy of the self-assessment of the community resilience partnership when it's done?
Yeah.
Okay. And actually, maybe more of a question for Dave. Status of the land study, is that?
Land study is in its final approach to be submitted to you next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. That's good news. Anybody else? I'm really happy to see these reports. There's one from Lyman Park and Rec. Also, and still doing the paint night, first Friday of the month. Concerts in the park was their best year yet. Thought that was awesome.
The tree lighting is December sixth.
That's right, five thirty.
December sixth.
There'll be surprise elves present.
Oh boy. They're down with the elves, you know? Wanted to move on to
Matt, I hope you don't mind me just, something I find curious about the the Town Clerk's report on the excise taxes on boats. I know not too many people are registering boats in the autumn period. But just overall, a year to date, it seems like there's not a lot of it. And is it a matter of that people have registered in other states?
I don't have to ask the
Just curious. There's been excise tax on vehicles, sure.
I mean, it depends on the boat. It depends on the boat's like size and motor, what the excise tax is going to be. So sometimes the excise tax on some boat registrations is like six dollars.
I see.
You know, if it's over a certain amount of years old.
Not only that, isn't it on the trailer and not the boat itself?
No, the trailer is a different registration.
This is also the, just for the month of September. So I'm not sure how many
Well, I think it's September and October on flip side. But still, sixty-four bucks, twenty-eight bucks, twenty-eight and eighty. Just seem kind of low.
Yeah, the shortest, the smallest amount is six dollars, I believe. And then from there, it goes up to like twenty, thirty. I mean, it doesn't go up very high.
All right.
So I have a question. So excise tax. The excise tax on a car, on a truck, on a trailer, goes to basically the roads, mostly. What does the boat go to?
Goes to your general fund and you guys vote that at your annual town meeting to apply that to offset your taxes every year.
Anything else on any other report?
Yeah, I have a question for the EcoMaine. The EPR.
Yeah.
So it talks about that, is the new law, is it just state stuff? Because I won't name names of companies, but there are a lot of companies out there that have some heavy shipping loads. Will it affect them nationally? Or how does that work?
It's just state, yeah. So it'll be, they'll take however they're going to do it. They'll figure out how many tons they ship into the state. That the towns will be responsible for recycling.
Yeah.
And then they'll pay that fee upfront.
Fantastic.
So that'll go into the pool.
Yeah.
And then, so it'll start January first, or twenty-sixth. Payments won't be until the following, like twenty-seven. So they have a year and I think a half. But we do have Kevin Roach, who's the CEO of EcoMaine, coming in for our December first meeting to give us a overview of how it's going to work. Because the more we can recycle, the more we can get back from, you know, from that program.
And I assume the fees will help possibly lessen the load on some of this stuff? I just wasn't sure how a state would affect a business that maybe isn't located here. I didn't know how they were going to do that.
Yeah, if they ship into Maine, it'll
Great.
Then they'll, they'll be notified or whatever, however, however it goes. But most of like the big companies are already doing this because it's already in Europe. They've been doing it for twenty years. So a lot of the companies that if they ship overseas, they've already, they're already aware of this process. So it's just going to be different from us, for us in the state. But this is the, in the EcoMaine report, the new MRF that is being put in at EcoMaine. Twenty-five million dollar investment, I think. So it is coming at the right time because this is actually going to be able to, I think, allow EcoMaine to take more recycling stuff because it's going to be more computerized, more like they'll be able to separate stuff out easier, so.
I was a little disappointed we're not on the map.
We're not?
No. We could address that December first.
Oh yeah, we are.
Did you?
We're right between Sanford and Kennebunk.
I need somebody else's glasses. I saw Hollis. Yeah, right? Give me those.
Sorry, I understand that this is modified by law, LD fourteen twenty-three. They made a couple of adjustments to this program. Something like if they can prove that X amount of the cardboard has been already recycled, it kind of decreases their liability?
Yeah, I'm not sure how that, how that part of it
Okay.
really works. And that would be a good question for Kevin. Yeah. Because we get so many updates on it, but it's like we could go from one update to the next and something has already changed with what we've been told. So it's kind of like, for my mind, I'm just like, okay, I'm going to wait until January first. And then I'm going to look and see what, what it is and, and go from there. Because it is still kind of a moving, they haven't even determined who the stewardship is going to go to yet. So, and that won't be picked until, I think, March, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any more questions or comments on any of the reports? Very minimal, move on to new business. Item A Cemetery Committee, request for approval of funds for tree removal.
So I mentioned to Lindsay, I was confused because it's three quotes from the same company. And I get it's for three different things, but I know it says that they requested them and they didn't get them. How does that work?
Well, so the way I've been doing it is, you know, we reach out to as many vendors as we can, or at least three of them. And if they just don't get back to us, they don't get back to us. I mean, sometimes you're limited in what, how many vendors you have. Sometimes they say, they do get back to you and they say, well, we're booked two years out. So we don't want to wait two years. And I did have the Cemetery Committee go through and put in like who they contacted, you know, how many attempts they, they tried to reach out to them. It can be a lot of work trying to get in touch with contractors if they're, if they're busy and they're not getting back.
Okay, so it's acceptable then, okay.
It's due diligence.
Yeah, they tried.
I've noticed in, on past expenditure reports, Jackson Tree Service has been used by the town. Were they contacted on this?
Jackson Tree Service. That could be for roads. If we've been removing like dead trees that fall on the roads, that's probably a road commissioner thing.
Okay. I have no financial connection whatsoever with the organization, but it did have three trees taken down by Jackson Service in the past. And I solicited a number of bids and theirs was by far the lowest. And also they did a good job. So I don't know if we want to prolong this, but that's a potential option, if not now, for the future.
Now, did you contact these or did the Cemetery Committee?
No, Cemetery Committee did all this.
That's what I thought, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry if I'm asking a question that you don't have an answer to. But I know where the Hill Road Cemetery is, Taylor Cemetery is right down on Day Road. But the Orrin Cemetery, does anyone know where?
I don't know the answer to that one.
Curious. I looked it up on the website of all the listing of cemeteries.
North Berwick Road, I have this, I found from a meeting a while ago.
Okay.
And then, so it says Orrin, but it's O-R-R-I-M.
That's probably
On North Berwick Road, several large pines, which, yeah, this is
That's probably why I didn't hear it.
Seven red pines, six oak trees.
Yeah, and John Taylor, and then Hill Road. So, yeah, they're all ones that they were next on their list.
Okay, thank you.
So I would say too, I did the math and the twelve thousand dollars that was approved at town meeting is, this will eat up most of it?
Actually, they may have a little bit more than that. Take a look at the expense report that we just received for the cemetery. Yeah.
For this year?
Fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty-nine, I think is available, if I'm reading that correctly.
Well, if you're looking at the expense report, you're looking at the cemetery account, which covers like the flags they get for the veteran sites. It covers, Flags is the only one that comes to my mind, but it covers a few things that they get each year.
Okay. Money's there.
Did separate, like I thought they did specifically ask for twelve thousand, just for trees.
Yeah, just for the trees.
I think that was
All right.
I can't to give you the warrant article number, but I think that's what I remember as well.
Twenty-eight.
Since we're talking about it, I'll make a motion to accept the, whatever quote for the twelve thousand for triple tree, trip tree company for tree removal.
I'll second that.
It's moved and seconded, is there any discussion on that?
Just to make sure that the company is insured, so that there's no liability to the town.
Yeah, so they, your, what's it called? Subcontractor hold harmless, they have to send us their insurance.
Okay.
It's part of your policy.
Very good.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Review signed notice of determination of abandonment for Old Post Road?
So the appeals process is all past us and now we can finalize it and get it in the registry of deeds.
Just doing that now or when we do our warrants?
Yeah, when you do your warrants.
Okay.
No further vote necessary.
We already voted on it.
Looks good to me. Is that, that's in here?
Yep.
Discussion on office closures due to limited staffing Friday, December twenty-sixth and Friday, January second.
All right, so we kind of have a weird situation this year. I think it happens like once every ten years or something, depending on leap year. It's Christmas and New Year's falls on a Thursday. So we're a small organization, everyone tends to request Friday off. And it's going to come down to, you know, probably having one or two people in the office for that whole day. So just looking ahead and looking at what other municipalities are doing. A lot of other municipalities are in the same boat that they're usually giving that Friday off, at least after Christmas. Not so much after New Year's. So I'm open to suggestions, input. I was thinking if we did close Friday, where we typically wouldn't really be busy after the holidays because everybody's doing their holiday thing or they're away, usually they're out of town, that the staff would have to use their PTO to cover it instead of us just giving them a free D-Day. Would be kind of the balance.
What's your recommendation?
That's my recommendation.
Was, was what?
To do Fridays off, but they have to use their PTO.
Gotcha. I'm going to make a motion to accept what the Town Manager just said. Is that a vote or are you just?
Um, I would, yeah, if you guys want to vote on it.
Yeah.
I guess because my, okay, so my motion stands to accept what you just said.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed because it's unanimous. Review and approve the Funky Bow special amusement permit.
And they typically ask, they request not to do a public hearing because they haven't had any complaints in the last five years.
We just did that for the last one because it was the first time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to accept the application for special amusement permit renewal for Funky Bow.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm going to ask my questions.
Aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed because it's unanimous. Alrighty. E, discussion of outreach to local organizations for food and clothing donations by Carrie Jo Sampson.
So, since I'd like your write-up Lindsay, I'm just going to read this. I was interested in reaching out to local organizations that provide food, clothing, and similar assistance to residents. So basically to explore, first of all, I have to find out what food pantries, what they would take, what they wouldn't take, what days they would take them, non-perishables versus perishables. Then find out from the town how much space we have to store it, set in a date. And then everybody's okay with me going out and requesting submissions on the town's behalf. Like the Cabela MRE thing was a fantastic idea. And if anybody wants to help me do that, that would be great. But first I need you guys' okay, since I will be calling for Lyman.
Can we in?
My, and I, it was an afterthought, Carrie Jo. Maybe doing like an MOU with, if we do work with a food pantry. Just so it's really clear on like what day they're going to pick up or, you know, the frequency, that sort of thing. What kinds of items they do or don't take.
Yeah.
You know?
And since we're meeting, you and I are meeting Wednesday, maybe after that other part that we're going to talk about with
Yeah.
Go over those, the memorandum of our understanding, that would be great.
Yeah, and then I don't know if they would do perishables. I don't think this would come up, but like I don't know if we can store perish, non-perishables, I would think wouldn't be an issue. But if people were dropping off like yogurts and milk, we definitely wouldn't have anywhere to store that stuff.
And because it's, I haven't found out from them what a date was because I didn't want to reach out to anybody yet. I don't have a date in mind, so I wouldn't announce it until December first.
Okay.
Or we could put it out like you do, if that's okay with everybody here. If I can find out in the next, before that, I have two weeks till the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
What?
Yeah. Did I tell you about the school?
You did.
Yeah, sorry. Confused.
More is more.
Yeah.
Yeah, so everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, I am.
So much excitement.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear it.
Yeah, I didn't hear that, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. And item F, Carrie Jo Sampson, discussion of public seminar on income tax basics.
So what I've heard in the past is that, say for seniors, there was some income tax relief a few years ago. And then that went away. There was something new and then it was very confusing. And I know there's new tax code coming out this year. So what I would like to do is if we can get a certified CPA that specializes in individual tax returns, not businesses, to come and give a little seminar on tips on filing your taxes. I think there's some things that are also doing away with the free submission, so there might be some more information on that. Even if there's no one sitting here, if we put it on YouTube, it'll be recorded and people can watch it when they have time. So again, I would need to start reaching out to CPAs to see if they're willing to donate their time.
I was just also maybe checking in with, checking in with the York County Community Action. They have a income tax assistance program. And although the website is not active right now, AARP has a statewide program too. I would assume that that would go live sometime within the next month or so.
Okay.
So.
I also wanted that person, whoever comes to dabble in state taxes for Maine, so it'd have to be no Maine stuff as well as federal. So if everybody's okay with it, get your help on it.
Sure thing.
Yeah. Think so, I think we're making
We're all here in agreement. Great.
That's it, and I think that's all my time for the next two months, so.
Item G, Joseph Wagner, discussion of proposal to review Arundel zoning ordinance, which I thought was a great idea.
Okay.
And you can tell everybody why.
Well, when the town was tasked with writing a medical marijuana ordinance, it looked to other towns of similar size and developed what could be used at, and we developed what could be used as a model. We did the same thing to draft a mineral extraction ordinance so that the process for monitoring sand and gravel pits would be streamlined and less onerous for businesses and for the code enforcement officer. Sometime back while I was attending an ordinance review committee meeting, there was mention of and praise for the zoning ordinance that had been developed by the Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission for our neighboring community of Arundel. It seems highly likely that Lyman will undertake an extension, extensive provision of its zoning ordinance. What I propose, that over the course, over the next year, the individual members of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, the Ordinance Review Committee, the Planning Board, the Select Board, along with the Code Enforcement Officer, examine the Arundel zoning ordinance, which is available online. What I'm suggesting is that instead of going to the expense of a tailor-made suit, we buy off the rack with some alterations appropriate specifically for Lyman. I'm not proposing anything mandatory, just an informal individual review, the suggestions from which can be consolidated so that Lyman's revised zoning ordinance can be fashioned effectively and efficiently. This feedback can be combined with the SMPDC audit of the Lyman zoning ordinance. And it's also consonant with the encouragement in the Town Manager's report to review the resources and information at the Southern Maine Planning and Development site. And here's our ordinance here. Here is Arundel's, again, it is online. But just through a basic comparison, you can see that ours is rather wanting. Also, this may be a little bit too busy for us, but I think it would be a vast improvement over what we have in what has been called the crayon zoning map of Lyman. A lot of transition zones, that was something that came up in the discussion over at the Orders Review Committee some time back. So just putting it, putting it out there as a suggestion.
Okay. Anybody have anything to add or subtract from that?
I'm waiting for the movie.
I'm not far that show. Mainly, I mean, I've owned a lot of acreage in Arundel, very owners. I don't think taxing layman with doing this is going to alleviate the need that we have to have from Southern Maine. But I asked three years ago that the, maybe closer to four, that the Planning Board do reviews. Every Planning Board member scoffed at the idea. That's when it could have started. We may not be in the position that we are enough. So to ask everybody to do that kind of homework when we really have discussed hiring Southern Maine to do that far so that we can review it, to me, that's the way to go.
Well, I don't see it as taxing, again, I'm suggesting this, suggesting this as a voluntary effort. And indeed, this is quite detailed. I think one of the things that can come back from folks after looking it over is like, it's too much. There's a specificity here that doesn't really fit us. So that section and this section, or maybe condense some of the language in another portion of it.
Just a fast example. In, in one of their zones, they have a two acre for a single family. They have a three acre for duplex. But by the time you do all the calculations of all the different restrictions they have on the land, in this particular case, you need four point seven acres. So to me, that's, it's, it's too difficult for a resident, a homeowner, a builder, anything like that to entertain anything like that. That's my opinion.
Can I make this chair, is he going to get the camera?
Sure.
That's getting way too far ahead of where we are. And that would be a lot of work for the committee and to cherry pick one town and not let the committee that works really well together go and look and all decide together and bring things together. We're pretty good at your research, but that would be extremely onerous. And it's way, way far in advance of the ordinance is. And SMPDC is critical to getting our ordinances straight because there's so many that already contradict each other that because there's so many that already contradict each other, that you can't even go, oh, let's do this one, 'cause there's probably five that contradict that. I'm just afraid of getting people worried, listening, and uptight about this situation, and this is, it is a hot topic button, I don't know who you're talking about, and I just think maybe pump the brakes and let CPC get through their job.
I have a few things, too. So, the code officer is, you know, in my opinion, busy enough as, as it is, so I'm not going to delegate that task to them to review other towns' ordinances. And the other thing, too, I think, if the board wants to delegate something to either the Planning Board, or the CPC, or whoever you appoint, you know, you're, you're more than allowed to do that, I think you should do it as a board, and come to a, you know, figure out the logistics of what it is you want to delegate to that committee, and then probably have them come in and have a conversation, and let them address, you know, barriers or issues, like, there, there's gotta be a process, rather than just saying, hey, Planning Board, can you go review these ordinances? I think you guys, as the board who appoint them, and I've asked you guys a couple of times, like, can you help me out with committees? I don't kinda wanna be burdened with, you know, having to, to oversight them as well, so that would be my suggestion to the board, looking at that, if you wanna delegate things, is, you know, to have some sort of process around that, so it's consistent.
Sounds good, like you said, it was on there as discussion.
Yeah.
So we're discussing, and, uh, maybe it's ahead of its time at the moment?
I haven't told them.
I mean, I don't, it seems like it's, it's not time yet. I liked the idea for the simple reason that SMPDC had a hand in it, and since we're hiring, gonna, they're gonna be doing stuff for us, I thought it'd be kinda cool to, you know, see what it's about.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not, it's not a bad idea, it's just, I mean, SMPDC is doing an audit, which we're really fortunate that they offered that to us, 'cause it's free of charge, and it, it really audits, like, all the inconsistencies with the law changes, it audits, you know, sections that maybe it references a chapter that doesn't exist, you know, so we'll, we'll get a lot out of that SMPDC's audit, I think that'll be helpful.
I don't know if anybody else wants to, can you send me the link?
Sure thing.
I mean, I'm not gonna read that whole thing.
Okay.
All right. Are we ready to move on? To H, review approved committee resignation, perks and rent.
I'll make a motion to accept H, I, and J.
Should we do it? Do them separately, I think?
Yeah.
H.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Fellows in favor? What's awkward?
Ask for the nays.
Excuse me?
Ask for the nays, then. There's no a's.
Is there anyone opposed? All right. It's a no. It's a no vote unanimously.
I do wanna clarify, I don't think that means they have to, like, stay on the committee if they choose not to.
I understand.
But it gives them the opportunity.
Sure.
And item I, review approved committee resignation from the IT committee.
Abstaining.
So moved.
No, I, I just said abstaining.
Right.
A second.
Any discussion? Fellows in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And one abstention. And item J.
You have to read it out loud, I believe, so it's on the record.
Excuse me?
Since it was accepted, I think you have to read it out loud for the minutes, sorry.
You don't have to read it out loud.
Well, identify.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We didn't say anybody's name yet.
That makes sense, okay.
It's Nigel Sampson, resigning from the IT committee.
Make a motion to accept. J?
Second.
Any discussion? Fellows in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed, 'cause it's unanimous. I thank Peg McDonald for her service on the Ordinance Review Committee, and also for the exit interview, and all the, everything else she's done. Move on to the minutes for the October 20th, 2025.
October 20th, okay.
I move to accept the minutes for Monday, October 20th.
As written?
As written. I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion on it?
There's just one minor typo, second paragraph of Brad Moore's, last name is misspelled. And just to, there was mention in here about the church being up for sale, looked online yesterday, and I did see sale pending.
It's under contract, yeah.
It's another, I think, another church in Kennebunk.
That's what I heard. Is there any more discussion? Fellows in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed, 'cause it's unanimous. How about the meeting minutes from Monday, November 3rd?
Move to accept as written. I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion on it?
Just a couple of things, Madam Chair. Kane is misspelled on the first page, in the first paragraph, and Joseph is misspelled on the second page, but what caught my eye was, let's see, under new business, the sale of the generator bids to be opened on today's date, so.
Yeah, and, um, so that didn't make it to this agenda, but we also did not get any bids.
Oh, okay.
So, I plan on putting it out for another two weeks, and maybe dropping the price like 500 bucks.
Okay.
That's to purchase, sorry, that's to, see if anybody wants to buy the generator.
Buy it, yeah.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on that? Fellows in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed, 'cause it's unanimous. Item seven, warrants. Payroll warrant number 21 in the amount of $31,965.12.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Fellows in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Accounts payable warrant number 22, issued for fiscal year 2026, in the amount of $134,650.90.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on that?
Can we just talk to that one thing I had asked about, Lindsay?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, so I had asked, I can't remember what the line number was, but it was for the Kennebunk Pond repair, and I had asked, is that, it was like, I can't remember the number, 8,000 something, is that with the insurance, and you said that's, this is separate?
It is separate, 'cause we've already been reimbursed.
Right, but this amount was, you said there was, oh, so, okay, now I'm confused.
It comes out of that reimbursement.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was a lead back.
I know you said, said that, I'm sorry, that there were more issues than what originally you thought.
We had the gate arm, which helped offset the cost, 'cause normally you'd have to pay a thousand dollar deductible, so we were looking really good at maybe around $250, but then there were some technical issues that were like 500 bucks.
So it wasn't the 8,000 extra bubos, it was the 7,000 whatever covered that, so it was a, thank you.
Yes.
That's not always clear anymore, no, thank you.
Any more discussion?
ECO Maine for this month, $15,323.8 for our municipal solid waste. I did call Lindsay and Jeanette when I saw that recycling was only $298.14, 'cause I was like, we are in trouble, if that's, we, that would be like three tons of recycling for a month, and I was like, wait, what's happening here? And so, I talked to Jeanette, and there was a month that we had no recycling on there, and I think I had, had brought that up as well, and I guess what happened, Jeanette explained to me that the food waste program ordered the small kitchen containers for the program through ECO Maine, so we were billed for those by the person that organized the purchase of that, and then we were billed again by the, like, tipping floor and everything, so we, they were paid, so now we've been working off this credit for that double payment. So that's why the recycling numbers have been down, not because we're not recycling, which, thank God.
Well, that's good, yeah, 'cause I was gonna say, every time I go, the machines are cycle act.
When do we get our buckets?
What's that?
When do we get our buckets? Once the food program starts, so we're still waiting, I know it's not on here, but we are still waiting for the DEP to approve our transfer station license amendment before we can do everything. Everything is purchased, we're just waiting for-
Some more updates in two weeks, the next meeting?
Yes, hopefully, oh, because I've been in touch with DEP, so just waiting on, waiting to hear from them, so.
Any more discussion?
No, ma'am.
Fellows in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed, 'cause it's unanimous. Accounts payable warrant number 23 in the amount of $5,258.72.
So moved, oh, seconded, 'cause he's pretty, he should go first.
Any discussion on that? Fellows in favor?
Aye.
Could I recommend we sign all this stuff before we do the next part?
Nobody is opposed, unanimous. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yeah. I was actually gonna suggest that myself.
Well, I came up with it first.
We'll sign stuff now. I brought my purple pen.
Okay, right up.
Oh, I never sign with color, I'm always afraid it will be invalid. I always have a purple pen.
Can I get my right line? You?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the weird ones that we just kinda signed double on the lines.
One this way. Page two. That one there, any signs?
Large amp here.
Should I fix the spelling of my name on this?
If you want, yeah.
Which one's that? That's the certificate, this is the-
You're welcome.
The road one. Dr. Herd, right?
Dr. Herd, I've been heard.
Brad did that one.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody's on that one. Oh, I am the last one.
That one? For you.
One more to come.
What did you do on that one? Is that one? Is that one bad? That way.
You got the abandonment, yeah.
Did you know, mister?
No, no problem.
Hey, have, have another AP warrant out there somewhere?
This one needs daves.
Got the date.
Have we missed it?
Oh, I think it just went down that, no, I didn't sign this one either.
Okay.
Oh, I'm at the top.
Okay, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, minutes. Minutes, minutes. Abandonment. That's done. So our, our next item is, uh, written as an executive session, I have written, uh, written papers from, from Joe Wagner and Karen Kane and Carrie Jo Sampson, requesting that it be done in an open session.
So, I guess where, when you do open session stuff, you put everything in a packet, so that it's accessible to the public, so I think you should table it, and then just have everything in the packet.
Table it for the, till the next-
Are you saying you should, or you must?
Because that's what you do with all your public information, like, you guys have worked really hard to be as transparent as you can be, that's why your packets are online, so that the public can access them.
Okay.
If you want it to be public.
Yes. Do, well, if we don't have a choice, do you wanna wait two weeks, or do you wanna do it between them?
I don't really know how to handle it, I would, I would consider the next meeting, tabling it to the next meeting by motion.
Okay.
So moved.
Sorry, I'm gonna wait. What's the motion?
Let this be, table, the item be tabled for open discussion, in the open session, until the next meeting on December 1st.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, well, just to vote on that, but do you want me to send you my information as well, so you have that for the-
Sure.
Got it.
If you want, yeah.
Well, if I want, if I'm going to present it, I need to have it in there.
Yeah, I think Michelle needs a copy of it, so if you send me your rebuttals-
Yeah, 'cause it'll be part of the packet, so everybody will see it, right.
Right, but she gets to, you guys got everything beforehand, so she gets your rebuttals beforehand.
Any more discussion?
No.
You can just send it directly to me.
Fellows in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed, so it's unanimous.
I have another recommendation that you guys look into, or we have the Fair Hearing Officer act as a third-party interview, because it's in your charter that your residents get some sort of due process. You know, you can discuss it openly in public, maybe you come to resolve, which would be great. Thoughts?
Are you saying fair hearing process prior to, or during, or an executive session?
During, they would do an independent review, it wouldn't be like a formal meeting, they would just review your guys' rebuttal, the person's complaint, and then they would make recommendations to the board.
So, would that mean after the meeting, next meeting, when all this is?
No, it would be when he's done, it sounds like.
Or, either way, I mean-
When, when he's done doing his diligence. It's not necessarily next meeting.
Well, we just-
I don't, yeah, I'm not saying-
Put it for next meeting.
I'm not saying that, I was just, it's just throwing it out there as a recommendation.
I, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
But I don't know when to interject that.
Well, I mean, they have the right to request it to be public, so I, I would just keep moving along with that, and then, then let the Fair Hearing Officer do their review, 'cause who knows how long the review's gonna take. the review's gonna take, right? I mean.
So it's after, it's after then?
During, after, yeah. I would start, you know, collecting the information to give to them and then they're just gonna do it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One thing I think would expedite things or clarify things is to, as I asked before, have the town council look at the law and this situation to determine, to determine exactly what is a, a meeting that is subject to a public notification and such. You know, none of us here, I don't think, have a law degree.
The charter. The charter does say that the fair hearing officer has unfettered access to legal counsel.
I'm asking for us, not the fair hearing officer, to ask.
I guess that would be up to these three. I, I don't know. How do you guys want to go about that?
Because I did send an email to all of you asking if the attorney would be present to give interpretation on what we were discussing and nobody answered me.
The way, here, let me just put it out this way, all right? Because I know it's, it's tense. I am a taxpayer as well. I live in a different town and I've had issues with my select board and not even really, like, bad issues, but things I, I felt like needed to be corrected. And I went to my select board and had a conversation with them. So every resident has the right to do that. You know, you guys are elected officials and you should kind of have some sort of process of how you handle it. We fortunately haven't had to deal with it that often, which I think is a really good thing. But what happens if a resident says, I have an issue with my elected officials? How do you guys want to deal with that? I mean, the way I look at it is at least have a conversation and so that person can feel heard. And then if you can't come to a resolution, look at some other avenues.
Fine.
So we have tabled it till the 6th?
First, first.
The first.
Till the 1st, I'm sorry.
The 6th is Santa.
And, yeah, that's right. And so what else can we do tonight? Not much.
Say goodnight. I do like the idea of the fair hearing board. I think that should be something that kind of runs concurrent. The fair hearing board can be looking at everything.
We have all these firsts lately. I think we do need to come up, that's a good point, that we need a process for it. Because I, I don't discount anyone questioning me or anyone else on the board. It's their right to do so, they're taxpayers, we work for them.
Well, I think, so, I guess in order for us to meet due process in accordance with your charter, you know, as the stuff comes in, I know you guys have to submit some stuff, I'll just work on gathering that and I'll, I'll submit it to the fair hearing officer. That way there's due process on that and, because not knowing what the result's gonna be at the next meeting.
Yeah. Sounds good. How do you, is everybody?
No, I'm not comfortable with, sorry, that's a lot to throw at me right now and I'm not comfortable making a decision.
Oh, I wasn't, I, I was just gonna do it. That's what it says in your charter.
Do you mind if I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Before I, thank you. You can talk amongst yourselves.
Can't. Just gonna untuck my stuff.
So who's gonna appoint them?
You have a, a fair hearing board member. It doesn't say that they need a quorum. It doesn't say that they have to have meetings in public. It doesn't say they do it, you know.
It says shall be surprised, comprised of three members.
Right. But it doesn't say they need a quorum to meet.
I'm lost. You said you have, we have a person.
I think, I think you gotta meet some due process here. Like, how do you guys come into the middle? If there's a complaint against Dave? Right? How are you, how's the board gonna handle that? Are you going to ignore the resident or?
My question is, you said we have one person. And it says you need three people. And that's it, they're appointed by the board. How are we gonna select or appoint the other two?
That's if volunteers come to the table, but what if that doesn't happen for a year? What if nobody applies to be on the fair hearing board for like two years? Are you gonna just leave that there until?
Maybe I'm not making sense. It says there have to be three people, but you're saying it can be done with one, but that's not what I'm reading in the charter.
I'm saying sometimes you gotta work with what you've got. Like, we, it says we have to get three quotes for tree cutting in the cemeteries, but we only got one quote.
Well, I'm gonna disagree with that because it says shall be. And if we're talking about policy and charter questions, then maybe we should follow the charter when we're doing it. That's my opinion.
So I, I think maybe the three of you guys, because you guys aren't subject to the complaint. What do you guys think?
I've already said, I think that the fair hearing board is the next step.
I like an independent voice or eyes on the matter myself.
Your view, that's exactly what it is.
What, what, what I, what I don't want is this board to have the impression that we're throwing darts at one another. I, you know, I've been there, done that.
Yeah, I don't like that either.
So the, an independent board, whether it's made up of one or three, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, that it says.
What it says. But I also understand what Lindsay's saying, we need to work with what we have. I mean.
Another option is you can hire, like, an outside attorney to do the same kind of independent review, but it's just an attorney instead of, you know, your one number.
I'd rather use our fair hearing officer.
That, that's my thought.
Honestly.
But he's, he's not, it's not like he's gonna be the judge, jury.
He's a facilitator.
Right, right.
He, he's, he's just gonna, he's going to, I'd say, findings. Can you chocolate?
He's a facilitator. To make sure it flows properly.
It's review.
It's review.
It's review is what it is.
He's gonna review it and give his recommendation.
Yeah, and then you guys take the recommendation or you leave it.
Well, we can discuss the recommendation. I don't think it's bad.
My question wasn't about the board, it was about the one versus three.
Well, and like I said, you can hire, if you don't want to do that, you can hire an attorney who does just a third party review, unbiased, you know?
Yep. Who puts that though?
The town.
I'm okay with the fair hearing person reviewing as a facilitator. I still think we could save a whole lot of time and, well, a whole lot of time if we just ask Brad Born. Here's the situation. What do you think? What constitutes a meeting that needs public notification in advance? I think it's pretty straightforward.
I think we just made a decision to table that until
Okay.
next meeting and so I don't really want to be talking about it.
We don't know that much, so. Okay, but, so we're doing a fair hearing review? That's what we're doing? Next, next one? Next meeting?
Stuff will be reviewed by the fair hearing officer, whatever it is that's submitted.
So I, I would assume that if we go to the fair hearing officer, he's gonna be in touch.
He's gonna be in touch with legal.
Well, right, but by, by the time we know that it's gonna happen, we're gonna know whether it's gonna be on the agenda of the next meeting.
Right, yeah.
Unless he needs more time.
If they're gonna bring in recommendations, it's, you know, the chair and the vice chair will be notified and we'll coordinate how that's gonna go.
Okay. So it sounds like through the fair hearing person, he could ask town council for guidance.
He could, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, fine.
Yeah.
They have a, do you say unfettered access? I like that word, unfettered access.
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
Dave, there goes your streak. Do I have a second on that?
It's like four years.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Fellows in favor?
Aye.
It's a wrap.
Sorry, I thought you were gonna.
Thank you for the chocolate.
You're welcome.